Mr. Shulman, Dr. Rowley.
Chairman here. Vice Chairman Watson. Mr. Arnie. Mr. Jenkins here. Ms. Nease. Mr. Smith. Dr. Rayco. Ms. Collins. Ms. Collins. Ms. Culler. Mr. Lyons.
I'll be sitting in for Mr. Lyons.
Can you sit down on this committee? You sit in.
Here.
It's working. Mr. Chairman, you have four. First item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda.
What agenda I say?
Motion made by Ms. Culler, seconded by Dr. Rayco. Any discussion? None noted. All in favor, say aye. I oppose lock sign. The agenda has been adopted, Mr. Chairman. Next is approval of March 2019 minutes. Motion made by Dr. Rayco. Seconded by Randall Jenkins. Any discussion? No discussion noted. All in favor, say aye. Mr. Chairman, as unanimous. Next item on the agenda is Jack Hattler's report.
From March, we wrote 56 building permits which totaled $8,146. We wrote 49 electric permits. $245 was kept in the county and $3,830 went to the state. And for the month of March, we kept $8,391 in the county.
Any questions?
Are we still senior in the state government?
No, if you want to. Can you pull that up now? All right, if you look for the next page, I have Jack Hattler's report stating building permits from 2011 to 2017. I like Mr. Kakes' plan.
The state building permit was residential new construction and residential addition. The state didn't do anything or didn't write any permits on commercial buildings. So the only thing that was written on commercial buildings was maybe $100, $150 zoning permit. So from 2011 through 2017, when we were issuing state building permits, we wrote a total of 529 permits, sent exactly $270,000 to the state. The county kept $7,935. That's $15 per permit for those 529 permits. So then January 2nd of last year, when we started doing our own building inspections and writing our own building permits, for the calendar year of 2018, 103 permits, $107,216. Calendar year 2019 through March 31st, so January through March 31st, 25 permits, $15,950. And that number is low because of, of that 90 days, it probably rained 80 of those 90 days. So last year, we switched the way we were keeping calculations on everything to the fiscal year to match it with the budget. So fiscal year 2018-19 through March 31st, 197 permits, $91,377. And normally, we don't talk about the current month. But we put April on here. Through today, we've written 38 permits for $12,497. Between the time we made this shoot this morning and now, we wrote another permit that makes, that permit was $1,167. So for April, we're at 13,664. The total for this fiscal year is $105,041. So in the nine months, nine and a half months of this fiscal year, we have already met what we wrote for the entire calendar year. We got two and a half months left. You know, last year, when we calculated what we were going to bring in, we were somewhere around $85,000 is what we thought we would bring in. We're looking this year for fiscal year at probably close to $130,000 is what we'll bring in in building permits.
And that's not counting these zoning, other zoning permits or anything? This is just strictly the building permits that would have went to the state of Tennessee?
Well, no, this number on here, this $130,000, that will be the total. If you look at the spreadsheet we've got in here, other than residential, new residential addition and commercial buildings, you know, that total is just a few thousand dollars. So everything that we're bringing in is the new construction. Then electric permits, you know, we're still sending over $50,000 a year to the state on that.
How much?
Over $50,000. So far this year, we've sent $39,215 to them.
Mayor, thank you. I'm going to go back. All this $270,000 that the state got, this passed out there. They would be, if this just turns around, they'd be getting saved and we'd be getting it too soon. Right?
Hypothetically, yes. But if you did over eight year period, we would be getting a whole lot more.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
But basically, you know, they're getting nothing. We're getting it all.
That's right. The whole of this getting it all, who is getting that?
Yeah, we, you know, we got $15 per permit. That was it. Rest of it was a check written to them once a month.
And we weren't surviving hardly.
Right.
In the land.
To do that, don't you have to have electrical inspectors and everything else in the way of the car?
Yeah, electrical inspector is subcontractor to, through the state of Tennessee Department of Commerce and Insurance. And that's been held for years. The county have building departments that they hold that state inspector.
Well, what can we do to make that happen? Let's get that more money than they do.
Well, you gotta get the county court to spend some money on a certifiable electrical inspector.
On that guy in Johnson County, you don't do it?
Yes, sir.
But you see, well, we've changed it around the last year. How much money are we getting that the county going into the conference? It's not going into planning board. It's going into the county.
In seven years, we made a total on building permits of $7,935. I don't think, that's what we average most months. You know, so in one month or less, we're bringing in what seven years have brought in.
You know, people says we're not paid our way. We are. It gets on my skin, you know, just like we asked for some stuff in the budget, we didn't get it. We had to reach out, but I'm going to get back to that in a few minutes. Thank you, Mayor.
The commissioners, the certified guy, what's the guy? Sir? The commissioners, what about the guy that's in Johnson County for electrical inspector?
Our commissioners?
No, he is a state subcontractor. I mean. Then our commissioners. Do we take him under our belt, is what you're saying? Yeah. I don't know if we could spend enough money to initiate that. And of course, there'd be a bonding situation we'd have to have on there. But I don't know if we can pay Raymond enough to come and just do Carter County. So he couldn't do the rest of the county? I think once he leaves, he can't. I believe he can't basically do, the way I understand it, when we checked on it several years back, they could do this county for two days and then do something under that bond for the state of Tennessee for the other two days. It's kind of like, I don't know, I'm not calling it a benefit, but that's kind of basically what they were saying.
Could you do a cost evaluation, what we made compared to what we next year we prepared for that?
Well, it would, the big thing is it would, the money that's brought in for the electric permit, you know, it would be just like the city of Elizabethan, Johnson City that has their own electrical inspector. Right now, we only have an electrical inspector two days a week. That puts a burden on most everybody doing electrical work. You know, we do have a need for a full-time or at least part-time working every day, electrical inspector. You know, the only day he inspects is Mondays and Wednesdays. If Monday's a holiday, well, there's only one day a week that somebody can, one day that week, somebody can get an electrical inspection done.
But you gotta also look at his benefits. He does get health insurance. He has other things and longevity and that. But we can do an evaluation. We can talk to Raymond tomorrow morning. I'll talk to him.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next item on the agenda is Coast Enforcement Officer's report.
So instead of printing out a whole bunch of paper on each thing that we've written up, we've decided just to kind of give you a brief everything I've written up in the last month. Kristen and I, she's actually put this together. We've got storm water violations, things we've sent 48 hour notices on, and then just some of my garbage complaints. This is Grace's Recycling, a storm water issue where they've got mud coming off of their property, mud and other stuff, we think. This is going to Josh. We voted on this last time. This one on Powder Branch, I believe, has been rectified, but it was a storm water issue with mud coming off the property as well.
Go back, well, there's a good picture. If you look at the silt fence on these, you can look under it. It had silt fence put up and it wasn't even touching the ground. So that was a whole lot of effort for nothing because the purpose of the silt fence is to catch the silt and so it doesn't run onto somebody else's property or into the road. But the guy was actually in the office this morning and he didn't get that fixed almost immediately when we sent him a letter.
We got another issue here on Blue Springs. We're not really sure what they're doing up here. They're trying to sow some grass, it looks like, but it's something that we need to write a letter on and fix. This one on Berry Hill, I believe, has been rectified. Stop work order, this mail's going to tell you about this one. This was on Keith Renfro in Lover's Lane.
He came in, got a building permit for an accessory building, for a detached accessory building. Told me that he was going to put an office in. Well, his one building with an office ended up being three little, what appears to be rental cottages. Then we found out that somebody was living in one of them.
And this is what we saw, those of you who wrote.
It was everywhere last week. We lived there.
Okay, and so rental cottages fall into the same category as campground. That has to be approved by a planning commission. And you know, it's not really complicated. It's just to make sure everything is done the correct way. He has no septic permit. He wants to say that he has a letter from TDAG that is a certificate of verification that there is a septic tank on property. So he thinks that he can build all he wants to and hook up to that septic tank. TDAG says that more than likely after, that a soil engineer probably won't approve that for a septic system because it's previous landfill. So ended up, we had to go over there and put notices of violation on buildings.
As well as you did.
I think you've got that picture, don't you?
There you are.
Have you heard from him? Did you post it that?
He's, he came in the office, but we haven't heard back since now.
He came in wanting to talk to us and he hasn't been back since then.
So these are the ones that we've sent 48 hour notices to. We've got car issues and old garage, maybe it looks like. We'll vote on this one to go to Josh. 195 to vacant house that I can't get anything out of, so we'll vote on it as well later. Dan wrote, I sent this. They've actually cleaned that up. And then this Pebble Lane didn't get a building permit to add on to this trailer. And then when they did, they didn't do it correctly. Everything they did was not up to code, so they're going to tear that down.
Did you, did you notice?
You can't really see it that bright in the picture. It's got four by fours under it. Right down the middle of it is a row of two by fours that part of them weren't even touching the ground. And we sent them a letter that they didn't have permit. They come in, we doubled the cost of the permit because they didn't have it. I talked to the lady this morning and as of right now, they're probably going to tear it down. Because it's.
Too much.
The only way, really, the only way to make it meet code is take it apart and start over.
Here's one off of Stinkin Creek Road that we can vote on later as well. So then these are just my base, my ones throughout this month, or you know, from our meeting last month to now. And I won't say too much about them. Just go through where we've been.
Have we heard any word from the court?
Not yet.
Well, you know, time to pay.
Well, I mean, I'm taking them back to be in contempt because they were not up to snuff and I haven't heard anything since then.
We're waiting on Chancellor to give us a court date.
That one was at that?
Not yet.
Whatever he has an open date, he has some open time in his secretary's schedule.
And we're ready to leave?
Ready to leave, yes, sir.
Jay?
Yeah.
Number two, was that the ones I gave you?
Yes.
Long Call sent you?
Yes.
Is that the ones we looked at, those things?
And we drove by them too, which you all, yeah, and I told you guys that I had written that one up. And there's some.
What about them on Shaw Creek we looked at that one?
Those aren't going to be on this.
Right and left, both sides of the road.
Yeah, that's not going to be on this report. Those will be on the next one.
Okay, you and Mr. Rayco.
We're going to go, yeah, we talked about it, me and Bob. But here are several here on Highway 91. Got some on Blue Springs Road here. And I'm just kind of showing you where all we've been. This 119 Pearl Bowers had this complaint. Then they tried to come in and get a building permit for an accessory building and we turned them down because of their mess.
That was one of the three building permits last Thursday that we refused to write because of.
The violation.
One had violations, had letter code violations. The other two were both wanting to put either a single white trailer on R1 or multiple residences on R1.
We had a lot of vehicles here on Bill A. Blue. I think Chris told me about this one. This is Joe Arden Road right up from Bill A. Blue. Kristen and I were out looking at that one and it was pretty bad. And all of these will be close to doing a 30 day here shortly. Or I'll go back out and look at it. And here's, this is.
Go back, go back on. If you look at the little storage building over on the left-hand side, you can see that they've taken all the insulation off of the trailer and piled a storage building full of insulation.
I think this is. This one's out in Central that we got. We got one on Cobal Lake here. Cantor Road is down near the Dog Pound. It was pretty, it's pretty bad down through there, if you've been through there, with some vacant houses and just some weird, some more pallets, forks and fences. Odd uses of lumber. Now, and you know, abandoned vehicles and empty houses. Here's one on 53 Garrison Hollow, just a vacant house. It's overgrown as well. These are some of the zoning violations I talked about, building without permits. Mel's got a whole thing on Mary Patton who's going to talk about. So that's, that's that. Now, Mel, which one do you want to do first? Now, if you give us just a second, Mel's got a few. Do you want?
Well, that might be a learn your own way.
We're going to come your way. Whenever, whenever you're ready, whatever we can get together.
1599 Mary Patton Highway, most of you have probably seen it. It's up on the left-hand side going toward, going up Get Crew. It's a great big RV with a massive shed built all the way around it with a huge deck on the front stairs coming down to it. Building permit was written for an accessory building, 30 by 40. And on the permit, it says that it'll have no water, no electricity, no HVAC in it. That was written August 21st, 2018. A storm water permit was issued at the same time. He went in and built a driveway into it and in a gully, he piled up rock probably 18 to 20 feet high. Didn't put a cover in it. If it blows out, it'll probably, I don't think it would really affect the road because it's quite a ways off the road. But it really does need cover put in under where he piled up all that rock. The accessory building was to be a covered shed for an RV. The day he got the permit, I explained to him that that RV has to be able to go in and out of that building. The structure is the only building on the property. It appears to be built for habitation. It has water piping, has electrical installed in it, and it's insulated. So with it being the only structure on property, it appears to be a residence. The fact that it's something over a very small shed or something like that, or a carport, it has to meet building code. You know, if you're building, if you're building an agriculture barn, building code does not apply to it. Everything else is built in the county according to the 2015 building code. The building code applies. On July 12th, he got septic permit. The septic permit says it's for a proposed house. The septic application of permit was never presented to us when he got the permit for the RV storage building. Then the certificate of completion for the septic shows on their drawing that it's connected to the RV. Next slide. This is the side of the building. If you look at the windows here, the windows are installed outside the siding. Code violation, it won't work, siding, water hits the siding, runs down to the window, runs inside the wall, rocks the wall. This is the little building on the left-hand side. And you can see that the piers are stacked, no mortar on them. Nothing on this building appears to be attached to the ground. Wind hits it, enough wind hits it, it'll flip it over. Same thing on piers. Footings are required for a building this size. They've got the little concrete blocks that you set it for before in. Does a big code. Septic system's uncovered. Insulation in the building, water line in the building. This one pole right here on the left-hand picture appears to be sitting, is sitting on limestone rocks. Nothing whatsoever to hold them in place. Floor requires an 18-inch minimum clearance under. You can see the RV sitting there. The first four by four to the right is touching the on. Next picture. This is the backside of the RV. You can see where they built the wall all the way to it. And they've actually poked in insulation between the edge of the wall and the edge of the camera. That is a heated space that has to meet building code. Part of the place is on the deck. The deck's not knelt down. You know, you can see where they built their little corner for the slide. No tires on RV. That RV appears to be placed there permanently. The sewer system into it's hard piped into it. This is the direction the RV has to come out. So somewhere or another with that fence sitting there, somebody's got to be able to back a truck up to it. And then the rocks in the left-hand picture, more than likely, the wheels on the RV has to roll across that. The rocks in the right-hand picture, more than likely, saying, you know, that RV cannot come, if you took the fence out, there is no way I would back a truck up to that RV and attempt to pull it out there without, either. Well, number one, you're going to destroy the RV because it's going to drag on the building. You're going to destroy the structure because the RV's going to drag on the building and drag it and damage it. And then more than likely, when you try to make that turn, the RV's probably going to flip over. This is inside the building. There's so many things, you know, that's, that's absolute great picture to send to ICC to show them how not to build steps. There's no handrail. The, there's a 36-inch landing required at the top of the steps. The door cannot, cannot open into that landing. On the right-hand, go back one more. On the right-hand side, if you go through that door and come out, you take one step and you're stepping right off the edge of. I did it, you know, I came out not looking down to see where my feet would hit. And my foot actually hit to where I would have stepped off the steps. Okay? Same thing on these steps. The greatest rise or height within any flight of stairs shall not exceed the smallest by more than three-eighths of an inch. From the ground to the one landing, you can see that's about, that's at least 10 inches. And then the first step is a whole lot less than what the other one is. If you've ever walked up and down uneven steps, you have to look at the steps to go up and down them because your feet don't get it correctly. That's a good place for somebody to break an ankle or a leg or fall off of and break their neck. This is a listing that was put on Zillow, one of the auction companies that was going to sell it. We called them and told them we had code violations on this. They had a key to get in. They, he took us down there and we walked through and showed him all these problems with it. They canceled the contract for the auction because they said they couldn't take the liability on selling that building. The, the orange rooms, I never did find them in there. There's doors and rooms all over the place in this little thing. They wanted to tell me that that orange room was for storage and to work on motorcycle. I don't know how you get a motorcycle into that room to work on it. Evidently, you'd drive it up the stairs and go through that door and then go somewhere back through into that other room. And then I've got pictures of the septic systems. Where it shows on the right-hand picture, that was the original application that shows a proposed house. Then if you go, go to the next one, next one. Then this is the certificate of completion. Still shows the proposed house, but now it shows the septic system connected to the RV. That was not on the original application. Now, my recommendation on this, I don't see any way that it could be fixed. My recommendation is for the planning commission to vote for us to, for us to order him to tear the building down.
Let me ask you something. Have you talked to him?
We've talked to everybody but him. We've tried to contact him many times.
We've talked to his father.
Him and his father came into the office yesterday morning.
Or his father talked to us.
We had to call 911 on him because of.
Threats.
His actions and his threats.
Well, when you say you left.
If, if the city police had gotten there 30 seconds earlier, they would have heard the threat you made of us, that he was going to bring on his family and take care of it.
Where are they from?
Three of them.
We're not sure. The, I finally asked his father if he was, if he was owner of record of the property. He said no. And when he said that, I said, I told him, I said, we're done with this conversation. I need to talk to the property owner if no one asks.
The homeowner accident is Elizabethan Hospital, so they're front here.
That's real problem. When they recently, when he recently got the accessory permit, their complaint then about having to get a permit was they bought land in Carter County because they didn't think we had building codes. And then I explained to him the process on what he could do with an RV. And you know, then it's the standard, well, it's my property. We can do whatever we want to with it. I went to a meeting last week at, in Johnson City, Johnson City Area Home Builders Association. The state fire marshal spoke at it. He said that when he took over as state fire marshal three years ago, Tennessee was number two in the nation in residential fire deaths. He said we're now down to number 11. He also said that there's 39 counties in Tennessee that don't have building codes. He also said that there's thirty-nine counties in Tennessee that don't have building codes. If you ask me, those two things directly relate to each other. We spent a lot of time and money and effort that we just talked about to, to get our own building department so that we do these inspections, so that we can stop stuff like this. Because that is nothing but a fire trap right there. Somebody will die in that structure if it's left that way. There's no smoke alarms in it. There's no window access to get out of it. You know, you, you see that, you see how the steps are, they're not correct. If that catches, you know, and then they said that, you know, they want to work, you know, to work on a motorcycle in that room. One of the people from the fire marshal's office at that meeting last week told us that they've got this new program they've come out with called shut the door. I had never heard about it. They've just started promoting. And basically what it is, if you're in your house and it catches on fire, if, if, if you're in your, you know, we'll say you're in your bedroom and, and something fires starts, when you leave that bedroom, shut that door. That contains the fire to that area. You know, with that twenty-minute rated door, you know, twenty minutes is, is huge and fine. They said in, in however many months they've been, they've started this new promotion, that they already have four known examples of somebody closing the door and stopping the fire. One of those examples just so happens to be that the guy was working on his motorcycle in his bathroom. And, and you know, evidently all of this is in the, you know, the police report and the fire department. How he got motorcycle into the bathroom, they don't know. A fire started, and when he left the bathroom, he shut the door. That gave the fire department time to get there and put that fire out without the building burning completely down.
I thought you were going to tell me it was it out.
I don't make the news, I don't make the news, I just report the news. So, so my recommendation on this one is, is a vote by the, by the planning commission that the building has to be tore down due to the fact that it can't be cut.
I'll make that motion.
Have we got a second? I'll say.
Second, Mr. Culler. Discussions, I, I highly recommend that this be, this structure be removed due to the fact that, uh, basically we went ahead and put the building permit in the back of your packets. And we're not going to question your intelligence, just allow you to read those and see exactly what everybody receives on the building permit. Basically, the gentleman, basically lied to us. And if he changed his mind, he should have came back to us and said, hey, I changed my mind. So it's definitely, that's correct. We've attempted to, Mr. Pierce, but the gentleman has to have his mother or his daddy or his wife call or bring his daddy in. He won't discuss it with us anymore. So it's a situation. Now, it's a situation we need to go ahead, we've got to stop work on it, we need to go ahead and have the BMO on, on the project.
Does this guy live around here?
It's a good question.
Is, is aggress on his permit is chucked. Well, is it chucked?
Chucked, three counts.
Three counts.
I, I can tell you there's not been any cars around that structure in the last two, three days, since last week until today. And then today I saw about four cars there.
About motorcycles.
Yes. I mean, we have a lot on here today that have stopped us and on that staircase.
On this stop work, you going to go down there and put a sign in soon as we vote on it, if it passes?
Stop work's already on it. What we're going to do is have a demolition clause placed on it. We'll have Joshua ahead and send a letter for demolition.
The, the, we can't get the structure, there's two gates on it, the gates are locked. The, uh, and you know, like Chris said, you know, we'll send, we'll send this paperwork to Josh for, for Josh to file it with court, the, the demolition order.
Has he got that history to it?
It does.
Yeah.
It has electricity in it.
Well, can we, can we put a four board restock electric in there?
Not Elizabethan's TDA per sixty, if they, Elizabethan electric, they cannot lose power such that you cannot take it loose unless there's actual violation of the electrical codes. And that takes a wood truck, you remember, Bill Moore and all that into, uh, we had the aisle which was in Ashville.
And there's, I brought the code book with me.
There's multiple code violations.
You know, just, just in the part about the permit, there, there's multiple things that addresses the permit on, on how the permits involve. Basically, the, the, the permit is revoked. You know, we have, you know, just in the planning office, we have the authority to revoke that permit.
And it is revoked with stop work order. Is there some motion made in septic? Any further discussion? Think it should be a roll call vote? Chairman Pierman?
Yes.
Chairman, or Vice Chairman Watson?
Yes.
Ken Arnie?
Yes.
Randall Jenkins?
Yes.
Ms. Deeds?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Akov?
Yes.
Ms. Collins is not here. Ms. Culler?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Pierce? Mr. Chairman has majority, motion passed. Now, on the other motions for code violations, we had Arnold Avenue Mills. Help me out here a second. So, singing Creek Road?
Yeah.
And there's another additional one I missed.
It was on the Toga Road.
On the Toga Road. Those are already previously looked at. These are to take them on to the chancellor's court. Do we have a motion on that? Motion made by Ms. Culler, taken by Dr. Akov. Any further discussion?
So as well as, you said Mill Pond Road, is that?
No, it's on Mill Creek.
There is one on Mill Pond, yes.
Is that Mill Pond that we're voting on now or Mill Creek?
Mill Pond.
Okay, I apologize, I put it down Creek.
This is the one at, at the end of Mill Pond.
Very end, yeah.
Who was that?
She lives in Washington State. I blocked her out of town, but I'm in my brain, she's different.
Any further discussion? None noted, all in favor say aye. All opposed, lock sign. Mr. Chairman, that's unanimous. Next item, I have two illegal subdivisions that were found, uh, and plaques registered as exhibits to these subdivisions. They are, uh, unprobated, uh, wells supposedly. Uh, there's no right-of-way, nor is there any road furniture on these, and there's no soils. Uh, it's my request that you allow me to send this on to Attorney Martin and begin prosecution. Sir?
Where they located that?
Oh, both are located in the, uh.
District.
Uh, that would be in Mr. Arnie's district.
District.
Yes, sir. And Mr. Jenkins's district, excuse me. So I have a motion on that.
Where's it at?
Uh, one's on the lake and the other one's back up in towards, uh, my mind just went blank, up towards Posey.
Make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Ken Arnie. Taken by Mr. Ralph Watson. Any further discussion? None noted, all in favor say aye. All opposed, lock sign. Mr. Chairman, that passed unanimously. Uh, thank the chairman, wanted to discuss some things. We have one public inquiry I know of.
I've, I've got two more things that I'm going to do then, Muncie Lane and Patton
I apologize, it wasn't on the agenda. Do push-ups. Uh, first, uh, the first question is highway court question. I don't know how many people, uh, on the county court that's on the highway committee here. Uh, I've seen one back there also, so there's two individuals. Mary Patton Cemetery, Matt, Mary Patton's siblings. Cemetery.
They're in my mind.
Well, let's just do Muncie since we can't wrap the computer. Muncie Lane is another piece of property located in Lynn Valley area, has a lot of drainage problems, things of that nature. If you remember, Mr. Helsa, the guy who's problem is there, built a tiny house, a lot of tiny houses, extremely small homes. He sits in, uh, has went and found and, and in place the tiles on the back of the properties. If you're looking under the seven point oh one, I believe it is, to the left-hand side of the stream down in the woods, there's a pile that was blocked that crosses over to Hyder and Buckles's property. Uh, they worked with him to fix that pile, to start that drainage back. The pile had collapsed or disstruck a ton. The next area you go to the right, you'll see a, looks like a driveway going all the way down into the tree area. Uh, that had been opened up, there was a little small six-inch tile that went through there. See, Elizabethan put that in whenever they went in to do the water lines. And it was overwhelmed with the last flood, last two flood events. And then if you notice the house on the right, it has most of the tan around it, or the yard is bare. Before you get to the horseshoe driveway on the right at Muncie Lane, uh, he has opened up that ditch line a little better. Now, when you get to Muncie Lane, which is to the right, next strip highlighted by two golden lights on each side of that, that is a county road. Just to these lower portions of the horseshoe driveway here right, there is a tile that comes through. You can see the natural drainway started at the right-hand lower side of the photo goes through all the way to where I explained where the tile was placed. That tile has deteriorated and it's not in very good shape. It's, uh, it's started to collapse. That's causing one other drainage problem, which goes all the way through till you get to Lincoln Drive in that area. That's the whole drainway for Lynn Valley, now excuse me, Lynn Mountain coming into the valley. This is one bad spot. If you notice you drove through Lynn Valley, you'll go up to the house on the right with all the greenery, greenery, it's got the three trees in the front yard. And you notice that it's been pumping water out of its basin. Okay? And he's got a failed French chamfer drain that has failed everywhere. If you look around that gold light, you can kind of see how much darker the grass is. That photo was taken in twenty fifteen, so you could tell it was working at that time. Now it's not working. Ditch lines on Muncie Lane on that side of the road are non-existent, uh, it's not being maintained. Our total purpose is to push for the highway committee to go ahead and get those ditch lines open and to replace that tile, and I'll let you help me show.
Oh, the, the house at fourteen oh four Broad Street, that's the corner of Broad Street to Muncie Lane. They have two sump pumps in the basement of that house pumping water out. Because that, that drainage leach field that was put in a number of years ago, we don't know when, has failed. And basically, all they're doing is circulating water. If the water, if something's not done to get the water in the front yard dried up, there's a very good chance Broad Street could cave in right there. It's, it's prime conditions for a sinkhole to develop. A drainage ditch or an underground pipe placed in there, the, the homeowner at Muncie Lane is, is willing to pay for most of this. But the Muncie Lane is thirty feet wide, fifteen feet from the center line of the asphalt on each side. And then there's a seven-and-a-half-foot drainage and utilities, just like every other property line in the county. He needs some help with this, or, or we're going to have disaster happen right there. The, uh, the property owner behind it told me on the phone the other day, he's in California right now. He said that he called EMA. An EMA office told him that there is no stream runs down through there. When we first found out about this quite a few months ago, I started researching on the, on the USGS topographic maps to find, to figure out where this water's supposed to drain. This is the nineteen thirty-five topographic map. You see the blue lines on it. In nineteen thirty-five, when they drew this map, that's where the stream was. It comes down Muncie Lane. And what this picture is, this is an overlay of the nineteen thirty-five map over the current USGS roadmap. So the, the lines are off a little bit. But you can see where the water comes from Lynn Valley. There's a stream comes off the mountain at Lynn Valley. That one is still there. Water runs in it all the time. It goes under Broad Street, then we don't know where it goes. It was put underground evidently many, many decades ago. In nineteen thirty-eight, you see one stream comes down through the middle, coming off Lynn Mountain, and it goes underground. Everything else is gone. So evidently from nineteen thirty-five to nineteen thirty-eight, it was so dry that that stream dried completely up. Then in nineteen fifty-nine, they've got the walk, they, they have drawn on the map that that same little stream goes all the way through Lynn Valley and runs backwards from what it did in nineteen thirty-five. So basically what these maps show is that there's a serious water problem up there. And the, the twenty-five to thirty inches of rain that we've gotten over the last three months, that water is backflowing where it used to flow a hundred years ago. There's plenty of room up there on county right-of-way on these roads to fix it. The property owner went to the county highway department and asked him if they would come down there and put the ditches in. They, their answer to them was no, we don't have right-of-way on that road. That's all, that's for your information, you know, that's.
What's next then? He says he don't have right-of-ways.
This shows that there is right-of-way.
We're going to give the information, we're giving it right now to, to the highway committee members to deal with this, uh, and we'll give them all the permanent information they need for that. The next one is the Patton Cemetery Road.
For, for full disclosure on this one, I know a whole lot about Patton Cemetery because I'll be buried there. That's been my family cemetery for right at two hundred years. I have seven generations of ancestors buried there. So I know a whole lot about this specific property. Patton Cemetery Road is a county-maintained road to access Patton Cemetery. This road can only be used to access the cemetery property and/or the property that the road is burdened to on, on the mountains. Due to the narrow width of the road, and there is no right-of-way on that road other than the asphalt surface. Now, when you're doing anything in a cemetery and it, you know, you've got a cemetery up in the woods, there is a ten-foot boundary on the side of the grave that nothing can be disturbed. So the reason this is on here is back quite a few months ago, they auctioned that property. We got one phone call from somebody who wanted to buy the, the, the back piece of property down beside the cemetery. If any of you have ever been up there, where the pond is. I told them then that they could not use Patton Cemetery Road as an access to that property. The roadway through the cemetery is not wide enough. So then back a few weeks ago, the guy who bought the front three lots that front onto Toll Branch Road came in to get a building permit, had a highway connection permit from the highway department, that he could use Patton Cemetery Road to access his property. His property that he bought does not touch Patton Cemetery, I mean, does not touch Patton Cemetery Road. So here's some surveys, go to the next one. This, this is the survey, the, the, the three lots on the left are the ones he bought. The parcel directly below it is the one that has the road on it. This survey was done in two thousand and twelve. In two thousand and twelve, when the surveyor did this, he found nothing that says that's county road. If he had, he would have drawn it on there and he would, you know, it would, it would touch those parcels. It shows Toll Branch Road being the road. Go to the next one. Go, go back one more. Go back another one. Back one more. Whole lot of research to, to figure out the situation on here. The, the brick division was surveyed in two thousand and two, recorded in two thousand and four. The Jerris property surveyed March two thousand and twelve, recorded April two thousand and twelve. Fred and Clara Daniels deeded a half an acre to Patton Cemetery in May nineteen forty-three. DeCarter County Road report lists Patton Cemetery Road as being a quarter of a mile in length, zero right-of-way, a ten-foot surface width, and an asphalt surface. Next one. Next one. Next one. Next one. Okay. This is the nineteen forty-three deed drawn out here in blue. Let's go up Patton Cemetery Road. You'll see on this picture that it shows that there's a road there. That is private piece of property. The road goes across that piece of property to access the cemetery. Back up one. This nineteen forty-three deed says that the above-described tract is an addition to the Patton Cemetery and is to be subdivided into plots to be used for burial purposes and none other. So the roadway that's on that plot, that's all it's for, is, is, is for those burial plots. Next one. Next one. Next one. Okay, the survey, this survey on the right I've got it blowed up. That shows in 2004, when this property was divided. That shows that there is a roadway on there. The broken lines is the road is, you know, it's basically drawn as an easement across that piece of property to get to the cemetery. The property on the left or the property directly above it you see get does not touch that road. That property cannot be accessed from that roadway. It doesn't matter if it's a foot or, or if it's 100 feet. The fact that they wrote that guy that highway connection permit to access that road, then you might as well take all our rules and throw them away.
Close to private property.
It, it's private property. They cannot grant access to someone across someone else's private property.
While I was at the meeting, the highway committee stopped him forward and asked about that. And according to the highway, the list, the road list, Mary Patton Cemetery Cemetery Road is listed as a county road.
Right, and, and according to the road list, back up.
That's correct. It is considered a county road, but it has no right. It just has asphalt, asphalt and a plain, humid.
That's what I've got on here. It's a, it's, it is a Patton Cemetery Cemetery Road on the road list. It is a quarter of a mile in length. It has zero right of way. It has a 10 foot surface width. So there is 10 feet there that is maintained by the county. That is an access to cemetery. State of Tennessee guarantees an access to every cemetery in the state. There is an unred easement on every cemetery.
Well, I can tell you what they're saying is if it's on the county road list, it's a county road. They give permission to run, take, she can.
And what all this shows is that, is that this gentleman's property does not touch that road surface.
I didn't see the property deed. I just know that he asked her about permit and they said, well, it's on the county road list.
And that's a situation you get there with the uh, accepting all these small roads and cemetery roads. And that's one reason that uh, uh, Mr. Tyler, when he did this under Uniform Highways Act. And stated that he would maintain all cemetery roads in Carter County. That's why they only made the, the distance the width of an actual road width. And like I said, and Mel's trying to, you know, all the version is that it goes across a piece of private property to attach to Patton Cemetery Road. The gentleman that wants to attach to it would have to get an easement or right of way across that small piece. 20, 25 foot of those individuals, property owners from releasing that to them. To allow you to connect to Mary Patton Road. So there's basically, the property rights of those individuals, you know, basically kind of, as a county can kind of infringe upon it.
If I'm not mistaken, I'll send a reminder, see if I'm right. Did he not say he has property learned out, he's using that road?
Yeah, I believe so, but uh, if you look at it on the air, I think he owns this property that connects to the main road also that puts up the fix he's trying to get access to.
He owns all the way down the main road. Go back to that flag real quick.
Okay, on, on this map, when this was, when this was set about it, lot number eight. That's drawn as a flag lot. They had to draw an access on that to, to the county road. The only record they could find for a county road was Toll Branch Road. That's why they drew that flag lot that way. It has a, it has a county maintained 10 foot wide road across it. And it just so happens that this is a situation here that came up that, that I knew about. The same day this gentleman was in asking about it, we had another guy up on either Sam Road or Blue Springs Road. That was buying a piece of property, that part of his property mortared the cemetery and part of it was on what, what the, the main road went through. And what he was asking about on it is, is how wide is this road? This piece of property had never been surveyed. So then when it was surveyed, it automatically became a 30 foot wide, was it 30 Chris or 40?
It was 40 on that.
But, you know, became a 40 foot wide of, of county right of way on there. And the reason the guy was asking was it, it came out to be, you know, I think it was almost an acre of land. In that, that strip on both sides of that road that he would be paying taxes on if it wasn't drawn correctly on that mound.
Who did that survey?
This.
That's Iron Mountain up there.
That's Iron Mountain.
Great hands, Steve. I don't remember this one.
Now, this is something that comes up all the time. Tennessee Code annotated 12 dash 8 dash 103. Gratuitous work for nonprofit organizations. Nothing in this chapter shall prohibit or be construed as prohibiting the county road commission, the state, or any municipality, boards agents. From doing work gratuitously for cemeteries, churches, schools, and any other charitable nonprofit organization. And I just put that in there, you know, just as a, you know, that's one of the references on, on why is this roadway there? It's a cemetery that's, you know, the many, many years ago, like Chris said, the highway superintendent decided he needed to go ahead and pave that road. Because they were probably spending, spending a lot, a lot of time and effort to keep that road maintained. Go to the next one. Now, other references. 1972 Private Act for Planning Commission. No streets, park, or other public way, ground, place, or space, no public building or structure, or no public utility. Whether publicly or privately owned, shall be constructed or authorized in the county outside of municipal boundaries. Until and unless the location and extent thereof shall have been submitted to and approved by the planning commission. The widening, narrowing, relocation, vacation, changing the use, acceptance, acquisition, sale, or lease of any street or public way. Ground, place, or property or structure shall be subject to similar submission and approval. That's pretty important paragraph right there. That's, that basically says that anything that's done in this county by the county government. You know, if, if land's bought to, to, to build an animal shelter on it, it requires Carter County Planning Commission approval. So any, you know, and then it also says that anything that's done with any roadways. And it seems to be an ongoing thing here lately that, that, that roads are getting put on Committees or to the commission to be accepted or, or altered in some way without coming to the planning commission. Then the zoning resolution adopted in 1994, subdivision regulations amended in 1986 and 2005.
Have you, have you been in touch with our road, your intended?
He's had, he's had notification now on this uh, About five years ago, no, excuse me, about, about three years ago, about a year and a half ago, to our county attorney.
But not on this last question?
Uh, I, I told the chairman, Andrew Moore, and discussed it with him. And no, I haven't discussed it with the, with the uh, Well, second to command, but did not even discuss it with, with our superintendent of roads.
Now, isn't it true that you can't have a county road list accepted by the county commission?
Yes, and every letter.
This is a county road and put it on the road. That don't mean it's a county road. They're supposed to have deeds to them.
Right, and the way they went around that over the years has been that they do a road list. And it's accepted every year, but you have some additions and deletions if you don't pay attention to them. And so, you know, we've worked for about 10, 10 years on getting all the right of ways. And I noticed the, the last, last adoption, some of those right of ways are not on there. Some of these TBA built roads that were built during the 30s and, and then back and re, restructured in the 40s and 50s. Uh, those right of ways have disappeared. The old 19E, you know, we did a lot of research on that. Spent a lot of time down Strawberry Plains. Four layers of road over to TBA, right? So there's a lot of information out there that's being lost and you have to be re-researching and, and replace back again. If so live by that elected official.
And, and basically the, the whole topic right here is that The planning commission is responsible for Land boundaries in Carter County and no one else.
And what Mel's trying to say, if this individual that owns the lot that is burdened or that the road goes across. Requested us or sued Carter County, we would have to go in as a friend of the, the individual, the plaintiffs. Against our own county government. So everybody needs to cross critiques and knock their eyes and pay attention to the such manner experts. Uh, and not do the guesstimation and all this feels good today, let's do this. As long as we can tell the commission, that's all we can do, you know, not if we get silenced to court. You know what that's like, yeah, what you do.
Well, and, and we use the surveys. You know, the, the surveys that are reported in courthouse is, is, is a whole lot more bindings than a deed. You know, a deed gives you, gives you a written description. A survey gives you a visual description.
Mister Chairman, this is not the first time this has happened with this road system.
Yeah, there's been multiple occasions.
He knows what's going on. This is not, he's not, this is not his first, uh, life trip.
Let us accept that. We've been waiting all this time.
He's gonna take a dictatorship back here.
I tried to put him in the case and then that's really wasted. Well, we gotta do, uh, change the executive officer for Carter County now, so we don't have that situation. So hopefully individuals will listen and, and not be tainted. Only thing, I've already discussed it with Josh, he understands, you know, we have infringed on this individual's property rights and, and Really extremely bad. Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir. And he totally understands that, so You know, People have rights in the United States, not just rights as citizens in Carter County or the state of Tennessee's, but, but they are Americans and there is rights and there's constitutional rights. And being able to maintain that freedom and, and uh, And the requirements of, of owning property. You know, we definitely, it's definitely being infringed on. That needs to be clarified and cleared up. I don't think it's our responsibility to do that. I think the highway committee and, and, and Superintendent Rhodes needs, needs to work and clarify this and rectify it. You got anything else on that? I think the next, we have a gentleman here on the forum, uh, for it, and I don't know your name, sir.
Anthony Lyons.
Mister Anthony Lyons, you wanna come on up? He's had that podium. It's Bulletproof's podium.
Well, I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak. I'll try to hold this lesson throughout.
Thank you, sir.
Get some snacks, bro. A couple of months ago, I went down to the planning office, Mr. Schuler's office, I believe. And told them that we had a trash pile in front of my house, a mobile home. And the gentleman I talked to, I believe it's this gentleman right here, I talked to him and he said, I'll send them a letter. And he did, apparently because they took the truckload of trash away. But they brought two truckloads back. And now they're sticking it underneath Mobile home edition. Kind of hiding. It's trash. We need a follow-up on that. Trash needs to be removed. We can, we can stack trash up and make it look halfway decent, but it's still trash.
What's that acre it was in line?
I think that's 1737, the acre, right?
You say 1637?
First you need to explain, it's not a mobile home.
Right, this is a camper.
It's a camper, right.
And I was told by your office that you can't add rooms onto a camper. There's a room on the back and there's a room on the front. That's been added on. I'm sure there was not a permit gotten for the add, but that's in the year there, they're there. There's a room on the front and on the back. Which should not be, and it should be torn down. You ought to just build it to destruct the man's property over there on Mary Patton, I think, to destruct this property. And also, this, these three, there's three mobile homes in front of my house. On Lloyd Ring's property. They're set on a limestone ledge. So I don't have, I never got permission to build, make a mobile home park out there in the first place. There's three, I didn't even be moved. Taken away. And I'm told that uh, that you can't put a mobile home or a house within 30 feet of the road right of way. None of these three mobile homes are more than 30 feet, 30 feet or more from the, from the road right of way.
How long has those mobile homes been there, Mister Lyons?
Probably 15 years.
Now they told Ford, I mean, that trailer park is.
Pardon?
Is that old trailer, that Ford's used on that land?
No, Ford's off on down the road.
Okay.
Now I'm told by one of the uh, relatives of one of those trailers, the gentleman that lived there died. And his sister told me that, that mobile home was unlivable. It was filthy. Hell hasser. But it's still there.
And so I'm living in it and a laser will end it.
Is that the one that had the dog living in it for two weeks and no water?
Yes.
While the man is in the hospital, the dog lived in the building for two weeks. You can only imagine.
Yeah.
And prior to that, there was no water for two, three months?
No water to let it escape here. So it's been, that's true. But something needs to be done, you know.
Jay, can you go down there in the morning?
Yeah. We'll, we'll take care of it.
The uh, And, and, and we knew about that, you know, we've, we're, we're working on this. And, and more than likely, when, when we do get this ready, this will be, this, this will be another one that will be, be brought to the planning commission. The, the, did you say nobody's living in it right now?
There's one camper that I was concerned about. There's somebody living. There's, there's a multitude of people living.
Okay, because, because one problem we'll get into there, counties in Tennessee cannot condemn property. The, the difference in that property versus the, the Mary Patton highway property is we have a, we, we have an existing property. We have an existing building permit on that property and what's being built has not been done yet. And we're talking an existing building, we can't condemn. But the fact that There's a whole lot of problems wrong with campers. They're living full-time in a camper. We know that because it has mailbox. The state of Tennessee says you cannot live full-time in a, in, in a recreational vehicle. We have that problem all over the county. All the additions that were done to, you know, so, so that, you know, we could stop right there. They're living in, they're, they're living in an RV. All of the additions that were done to it were done with no building permits. Because a valid permit cannot be issued to add on to an RV. And I think the worst problem we have is We've got to take, you know, we'll have to take it to a judge and see what the judge says about it. Because we don't have any, we don't have any prior cases that we've done with this situation.
But if, if there's a rule that you can't build on to a RV, then why can't we just shut it? I mean, obviously it's a violation of our.
I don't know if we have procedures to do that.
At least the procedure somewhere.
But that's, that, that's what I'm saying, we, you know, we're, we're gonna need some direction from, from, from either the county attorney, court, take it, take it to a judge. And, and let him answer, you know, and let him make a ruling on this.
Well, firstly, I want to wear this, I'll take care of taking this under my hand and we'll move forward with the admission of lies. You know what I'm doing tomorrow.
Okay. Okay.
But, uh, we'll, we, uh, we'll have you some answers, if on the right, I can call you, Mr. Limes.
Yes, it's five four two, six one six six.
Kim, five four two, six one six six.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you. Andy that lives in this trailer. I've been on the way. Do we have Louis Green's phone number since the-
Yeah, I know where he lives.
No problem.
We'll call him.
I'll call him tomorrow.
That's how-
I know where he lives. Yeah, I, I can find him, I know his two, two homes, so that's easy. Okay.
Thank you, sir. I'll totally aware, we'll go ahead and deal with that.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I guess the next pause under you for adjournment.
Okay, I've got a few things I'd like to bring up. Uh, we, as you know, we went on this tour last week, and we found a lot of things, and two, three districts we went to, and they're bad, 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 bad. You can ask the people who are with me, they're bad. And we're gonna have to get hard on it and not wait thirty days or six weeks. I may get channeled in on the bottom, we got to, all of us, not just you two people up there, three people up there, but all of us, because we found some bad stuff. And Mr. Akav is bound here to take a day off, we go with the chain of stone degree before we found a lot, and they go to work, get problems.
He's semi-retired, he's all. Isn't that right, Marcia? That's an old south, see? You're busted.
If you ain't gonna help yourself, we didn't help you. You're gonna have to get off your high end to help us, I gotta tell you. And if you don't want to, we, we'll just have to, the mission, send somebody else to your place, because that's just the way it's, it's bowling down to. There ain't no use to bark about it, you know that. Okay, we got a lot of things in the county that is violation like, they think they can get by with it, he said, put it in the yard and put it up the torches, up against the houses. So, you, you know, you go by, write that number down, it's seventeen thirty-five, write it down on Gap Creek Road, put it down. If you really do, turn it in to JML, call it in. You don't have to drive, say the guys, these guys are getting high. But anyway, you can do that.
That's what we need to do with the-
Well, if you live on the side of here, you get, you get off your butt, you go and lay it down.
Get it to them.
That's right. And then, then give us report back. But anyway, then we got, we got a, that's Stone Creek, I'll say one place. We got a place up there, we got twenty-five cars and trucks on one side and twenty on the other. Okay, and, and the guy, and I'm going up the road, there's a guy that I looked at up there fifteen years ago, we got on it, got hot on it, brought him into court, and he moved everything out, moved the cloud out, been Mr. Schuler, found out he moved his whip, and a hog. Okay, and he's got stuff backed out there right now, he's been sitting there cooling it all these years again, thinks he gets by with it. And he is getting by with it, too, we get off our butts and give him. Hey, if we have to, we'll, we'll take the press with us, take some pictures, but edit it out on paper, excuse my friends. And I've been getting car people calling, hey, I get two, three calls a day. But anyway, just lack of storage, car lots. We got car lots sitting there for, you know, we get his lawns out. But you got, you got stores too, you got cars being sitting in, in them dense areas for years, who's paying the taxes? Something about it sitting there. Isors. We need, like you say, if you got it in your district, get off your butt, you have to get them down here. And the next time we'll have a meeting, we might stay all day and all night. That's, that's just the way it is. I'm getting tired of people calling, saying, "Hey, what about that broke Gap Creek, what about the Stone Creek, what about the city?" Hey, I ain't that. But, uh, we need to do something. And, uh, you know, this plan board makes, it's making money, we always have to work. And now, you can see there where Mr. Mr. Schuler, Mr. Uh, uh, Mailbacker showing us what the camp, that plan board's bringing in to the camera. Where, where we, let me get that little thing, we'll get the big figure this coming here. It's gonna, it's gonna end the cough a little here, and you see the county and the taxpayers there from there, and he's office owners too. So, you know, we better do a manager job. We gotta, we gotta get more work, we gotta work at it. Does anybody, can you quickly ask me?
Sorry?
You know, I used to be a first sergeant, yeah, about ten.
What, what kind of recommendations y'all have about us getting a, a part-time elective inspector?
You'll ask Mr. Schuler, Mr. Schuler.
I'm gonna check again, we looked at the end of that several years back, uh, several, well, we've looked into it twice. One was the bonding issue, the second was the, uh, the ability to, uh, provide the benefits that the individual gets being a subcontractor from TBA to these, uh, to the state. So, there were a lot of things there. I think we looked at it back when you were chairman, uh, Commissioner Johnson, and then we looked at it again, uh-
I was just remembering a lot of books for the beginning, but-
Yeah, that, back, you know, when we moved the panel to the gas, the life on the black one. But, yeah, I'll check into it and, and I'll give you a report next month.
Sure. We're lacking, in fact, but, so like that could make us some money too, I mean, maybe plus make some money.
It could pay for itself, it made a million cents.
Well, when you say it'll pay for itself, yeah, we do, do a lot of work, but it's taken two counties right now to meet the criteria to, to, to pay for one individual to do the inspection.
Full-time.
Yes.
What about a part-time?
If you have a part-time, and have a pool of justified arguments, you're right to pay a whole lot so they can pay their own insurance, I mean, there, there's a kid for tat there that we have to look into. But I'll, I'll give you a rundown, I estimate, and then I'll talk to Mr. Mr. Raymond and see what he thought, you know, what his feelings are. As far as, you know, if he wanted to kind of work for us.
Well, listen, you could have a certain, also, I have to be, uh, concerned about, if he did go full-time, we would be reaping benefits from the rate-
What he gets to.
Yeah, but what's the state say about him being hired as a full-time, his certifications and everything, part of the insurance and commerce, search of law guidelines, I know they have.
Yeah, he'll have to maintain those, I mean, he'll have to maintain his certifications that he has now to, to work for us.
Those are in the board, since a county would be-
I'll have a look into that too.
Hey, I'm ringing up something up, yeah. I got a call chatter, you know, around about seven o'clock, I'm driving, love large, going, going towards hand, man, another gentleman on the board went, I called him, I said, "Can you go in, we're with him?" And hole in the driveway, it's about as big as this right here, you can put a car down in it, or do you rent it?
I actually put a bus in it now.
And what it's doing is creaks.
It makes-
Yeah.
All right, what's happened is the individual of the property, two titles back work for a, a construction company here that's extremely large, uh, and he did a lot of field work. The original driveway tile was a forty-eight inch tile. This individual decided to neck it down and go another twenty feet upstream with an eighteen inch tile. Since all the rains and things that we've had, that eighteen inch tile has been overwhelmed, not clogged, but overwhelmed. During the time that it's overwhelmed on the downstream lower side of that tile, it initiated its own, uh, hydraulic tunneling. The hydraulic tunneling moved on about fifty-five feet, and then it ended, entered the cavern of the water table. Uh, once it entered that cavern, it filled up, it allowed the cavern top to, to collapse, cavern, cavern top collapsed, the three layers of asphalt on top of it went in to the cavern and ended up settling somewhat on the debris that was washed off during the hydraulic, uh, uh, mining of, of the property. Long story short, it's, it's more than thirty feet off the state right of way. State says that there's nothing they can do, EMA, uh, as far as I know, told the lady that there was nothing they could do. Uh, it's definitely a hazard, the, uh, the water will have to be stopped from going in there, and the hydraulic mining will have to be stopped one way or another. What makes it even worse, the young man's wife is there, she is now in Western Iraq. Uh, so what I did, I went ahead and contacted a friend of mine that lives near, I'm gonna go ahead and take a backup, since I can't get any help from, uh, elected or governmental officials, uh, pay for the fuel, and I'm gonna go up and remove eighteen inch tile tomorrow and open that office back up so they can go through the forty-eight inch tile like it should be properly, and, uh, try my best to maintain it. I'm not going to attempt to move the sinkhole or try to fill that sinkhole in that office. I, I don't have time or the money in my pocket to take care of that. Uh, hopefully, with the declaration that the, uh, president signed the other day, hopefully the state of Tennessee, which I made them aware, with the, uh, the sinkhole individuals at TDA that handles that, and they said basically it was hydraulic mining and there wasn't much they could do. Don't understand it, I'm just telling you what the gentleman, the lady told me. So, uh, basically, what we'll do, we'll look at, and then I will give some construction individuals, uh, there's some things going on, not near there, but close enough to possibly get some larger rubble stone and fill that back in. What's bad, lady's got two little kids there, little kids-
Can't get in.
She was about that close to falling in that hole when her father got there that day, on this last major rain occurrence we had. And he pulled in and a lot of them fell. So I'm gonna take care of that, that's just one of those things, it's a-
Yeah. Sir, does he, uh, I don't look into this, uh, popular insurance, have any-
Well, I talked to him myself, talked with her, yeah, yesterday after we left, and she talked to him, they said no, then I called him, and she had landscape insurance.
Let's go on.
Lady terrible.
Really?
Never heard of landscape insurance. Yeah, I asked the individual, I was talking to him on one eight hundred, never transferred me back, we're a lovely lady, kiss wash, they never heard of landscape insurance.
They're raining.
No, they actually answered.
Her husband's in Iraq, he got fifteen.
I've been out of country, been screwed by the county, by my government, so I know how it feels to be somewhere helpless and not be able to, you know, people take care of us, or someone will take care of us. I wouldn't get you in the ballgame, Brad. I don't think you can stand vibration.
You see that big hole there?
I know, I couldn't get the bag going around that.
That's all I have.
Questions, Chairman?
Most of them is covered.
Sure.
Say goodbye.
Thank you, everybody.
Dean and Pierce.
Appreciate it.
I'm glad to say hi. Thank you, lady Joe.
Give us a man dresses instead, thank you, man.
What the chairman's saying was the girls get to work.